All right. Good evening, everybody. Calling to order the Wednesday, September 17th, 2025 meeting of the school committee. Members present: Angela Gothols, Joe Jackson, Mike Ober, myself, Tim Killam. All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Calling to order the Wednesday, September 17th, 2025 meeting of the school committee. Members present: Angela Gothols, Joe Jackson, Mike Ober, myself, Tim Killam, Peter Nero, and Lori Wykow.
Can't even see your lips moving.
Can't even see your lips moving.
Check one, two. Check one, two.
Okay, but stay there. Don't leave, just in case. Okay, but stay there. Don't leave, just in case. Give us a minute. Give us a minute. There it is. There it is. Just edit that out, please. And I can't hear it now. I shake here and there.
Test one, two, three, four. Test one, two, three, four.
All right, we'll try that one more time. All right, we'll try that one more time. Members present: Angela Gothols, Joe Jackson, Mike Ober, myself, Tim Killam, Peter Nero, Members present: Angela Gothols, Joe Jackson, Mike Ober, myself, Tim Killam, Peter Nero, and Lori Wykow. and Lori Wykow. Tim, could you lead us in the pugilizations? Tim, could you lead us in the pugilizations? Thank you. And Angela, could you read our mission statement, please? Thank you. And Angela, could you read our mission statement, please?
To create an inspiring, challenging, and supportive environment where students To create an inspiring, challenging, and supportive environment where students are encouraged are encouraged and assisted in reaching their highest potential. and assisted in reaching their highest potential.
Thank you. And now we have our students' report. Thank you. And now we have our students' report.
And Liam Jacobson. And Liam Jacobson. The girls soccer team has also been fighting hard with three wins and four losses and The girls soccer team has also been fighting hard with three wins and four losses and one one tie as of now. tie as of now. Their next game will be home against Proust on the 19th. Their next game will be home against Proust on the 19th. The girls volleyball team is undefeated and heading their season with a four-win-and-zero-loss The girls volleyball team is undefeated and heading their season with a four-win-and-zero-loss record. record. Their next game will be home against Barrington on the 22nd. Their next game will be home against Barrington on the 22nd. Girls tennis is currently 1-3 with another match today. Girls tennis is currently 1-3 with another match today. These games have consistently displayed immense talent and intense competition. These games have consistently displayed immense talent and intense competition. Seniors just had their senior barbecue on Sunday at the town beach. Seniors just had their senior barbecue on Sunday at the town beach. We celebrated with food, music, and beach activities. We celebrated with food, music, and beach activities. We also have a fundraiser on the 29th at Mel's Downtown Creamery from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. We also have a fundraiser on the 29th at Mel's Downtown Creamery from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Come support. Come support. Also, we have reintroduced a senior lounge in the cafeteria for win and lunchbox. Also, we have reintroduced a senior lounge in the cafeteria for win and lunchbox. Next up is the Halloween dance. Next up is the Halloween dance. On the other hand, the freshman class is starting their elections while the junior On the other hand, the freshman class is starting their elections while the junior class is hosting a golf fundraiser on October 4th. class is hosting a golf fundraiser on October 4th. More information can be found on their Instagram page @WesterlyHS2027. More information can be found on their Instagram page @WesterlyHS2027. In exciting news, there are many new events being created at the high school. In exciting news, there are many new events being created at the high school. The Bulldog Fall Festival is currently in the works. The Bulldog Fall Festival is currently in the works. We are planning a day out on the quad filled with fall-themed activities run by the school We are planning a day out on the quad filled with fall-themed activities run by the school clubs, organizations, and local vendors. clubs, organizations, and local vendors. More information is to come, but the expected date is Saturday, the 25th. More information is to come, but the expected date is Saturday, the 25th. Additionally, old clubs are restarting and new ones are being advanced. Additionally, old clubs are restarting and new ones are being advanced. The environmental club completed a coastal cleanup at the Musquamikit Breachway and the The environmental club completed a coastal cleanup at the Musquamikit Breachway and the Skills USA chapter is starting elections. Skills USA chapter is starting elections. Film Club, Peer-to-Peer, Sit Team, The Barker Outdoors Club, and more are all beginning Film Club, Peer-to-Peer, Sit Team, The Barker Outdoors Club, and more are all beginning to organize their years as well. to organize their years as well. Brand-new clubs for this school year include the Future of Film Club and the Clay Club. Brand-new clubs for this school year include the Future of Film Club and the Clay Club. Finally, the academic pep rally is approaching. Finally, the academic pep rally is approaching. An event started last year that aims to encourage students to focus on academics An event started last year that aims to encourage students to focus on academics and recognize school-oriented achievements, paralleling the sports pep rally. and recognize school-oriented achievements, paralleling the sports pep rally. I look forward to seeing all the new accomplishments from students and faculty alike as we continue I look forward to seeing all the new accomplishments from students and faculty alike as we continue into the fall semester. Thank you. into the fall semester. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Any community members have questions or response? Any community members have questions or response?
If I could, Madam Chair, I just wanted to take a second because this, in some way, If I could, Madam Chair, I just wanted to take a second because this, in some way, impacts Brady. impacts Brady. And talk about the National Merit Scholarship Program. And talk about the National Merit Scholarship Program. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an annual academic competition among high The National Merit Scholarship Program is an annual academic competition among high school students for recognition and college undergraduate scholarships that began in school students for recognition and college undergraduate scholarships that began in 1955. 1955. The program is conducted by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, a not-for-profit The program is conducted by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, a not-for-profit organization that operates without government assistance. organization that operates without government assistance. United States high school students enter the National Merit Scholarship Program by United States high school students enter the National Merit Scholarship Program by taking taking the preliminary SAT, the PSAT. the preliminary SAT, the PSAT. And Brady took this in the fall of 2024, which serves as initial screen for over 1.3 And Brady took this in the fall of 2024, which serves as initial screen for over 1.3 million entrants each year and by meeting published program entry and participation million entrants each year and by meeting published program entry and participation requirements. requirements. So Steve and I were congratulating him, but he doesn't know. Apparently, Ms. Mullen hasn't So Steve and I were congratulating him, but he doesn't know. Apparently, Ms. Mullen hasn't had a chance to tell him. had a chance to tell him. But Brady is one of 50,000 nationally who is receiving a letter of commendation from But Brady is one of 50,000 nationally who is receiving a letter of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship for his outstanding performance on the PSAT last spring. the National Merit Scholarship for his outstanding performance on the PSAT last spring. Again, out of 1.3 million, he's one of 50,000 being recognized and a small handful here Again, out of 1.3 million, he's one of 50,000 being recognized and a small handful here in Rhode Island. in Rhode Island. We have one other student who's moving on to the semifinals, Casey Lee at the high We have one other student who's moving on to the semifinals, Casey Lee at the high school. We're very proud of him as well, but we wanted to congratulate Casey while school. We're very proud of him as well, but we wanted to congratulate Casey while we have him here. Brady, I'm sorry. Brady, oh, we have him. we have him here. Brady, I'm sorry. Brady, oh, we have him. So he will also be featured at the academic pep rally next week. Shout out. So he will also be featured at the academic pep rally next week. Shout out.
Any community members have questions or anything? Any community members have questions or anything? Thank you so much and congratulations. Thank you so much and congratulations. Next up, we have executive session. So I will seek a motion to go into executive session Next up, we have executive session. So I will seek a motion to go into executive session under item RIGL 42-464 and 42-465A1, superintendent evaluation. under item RIGL 42-464 and 42-465A1, superintendent evaluation. Second, motion in a second. All members in favor? Second, motion in a second. All members in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. So there were two votes taken in executive session. There was a vote to extend the superintendent's contract through June 30th, 2028. That passed six to one. And a vote to increase the superintendent's salary 3.5% effective July 1, 2025, consistent with the increase for our teachers, and that passed unanimously. I will seek a motion to keep the minutes of executive session confidential.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All members in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Next here, we have open forum, and this open forum is on school committee agenda items only. Is there anybody who wishes to address the committee? All right. Seeing none. Next up, we have our insistence superintendent's report.
Good evening. Thank you. First, I'd like to begin by returning to the strategic plan on behalf of our leadership team, which I presented two weeks ago, which is guiding our work over the next three years. This plan is ambitious, and we fully recognize that it will require tremendous effort from our building leaders and teachers. But the goal is clear, to ensure every child receives the highest quality instructional experience so that when they walk across our graduation stage, they're truly prepared for college, career, and life. There are many things happening right now to ensure our strategic plan is alive and functioning in our schools. So here's a few examples of things that are happening that are aligned with our plan. The high school leadership team is working closely with the math department around the implementation of common end-of-unit assessments. Some of our high school teachers have begun exploring Open Scieta Science HQIM, or High Quality Instructional Materials Approved by Ed Reports. As part of our pilot process outlined in recent legislation, our middle school continues to engage in this work, and some elementary teachers will soon begin as too. Currently, the legislation sets for science HQIM adoption in June of 2026. At the elementary level, fifth grade transitioned from a departmentalized T-model to a true K-5 elementary configuration that better meets students' developmental needs and ensures instructional minutes are protected to the best they can, particularly in math and ELA. They have been participating in professional development facilitated by our ELA and STEM coordinators, Carmela Samitaro and Stephanie Lenahan. They're both fantastic in these roles and are very much powerful assets on our team. I want to publicly thank them for their continued hard work. In addition, we are fortunate to have our two elementary literacy coaches preparing to launch the one-on-one coaching and structured literacy with our K-5 teachers, supported by the state literacy grant we were awarded. To conclude, this work is challenging, but if our mission is to serve students, then it is the right work, and we are committed to staying consistent, coherent, and focused as we move forward. So, thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you. All right, and now we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we talked about last time, work continues at our two elementary schools, in particular Dunn's and State Street, with regards to plantings and seeding and all of that is happening now as things are starting to cool down, so the landscaping is getting done. Buildings are looking great. There's still some work happening in the buildings, but overall, the kids have been thrilled, the parents have been thrilled, the teachers are very excited to be working in those facilities. State Street School, I understand that the sheetrock is going up on the walls upstairs, and Ms. Wilbert was going to be touring the building, I think, today or tomorrow. So that's very exciting as well, and that's happening. It's all happening. Tonight, in your packets, you have the administration's, really one of the first steps in our budget process, is the 2026-2027 proposed capital request. This has to be over to the town as one of the first documents that we turn over to the manager. These requests were reviewed and slightly modified by the building subcommittee at last Wednesday night's meeting, and come to you with that body's recommendation. Cindy will talk you through that document, but we also have Rudy Hauser here from the Transportation Department. Rudy is kind of our point man on all things electric buses. And Mark McKinnon is also here to join us to answer any questions that we may have on that. Next month, we will be bringing you the library media policy for an update. The committee has a library media policy in place currently, but in light of some of the changes in law promulgated this summer with respect to what was referred to as the Right to Read Act, there are some tweaks that have to be made in there. They're not major, they're really about constitution of any groups for considering appeals or review or reconsideration of materials. They're slight tweaks, but again, we want to be in lockstep with the state law so that should we find ourselves in that position, it runs that much more smoothly. So we will be working through that and bringing that to you next month. That concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? None. Thank you, Dr. Garso. Next here, we have our financial report, and it looks like our first one is our Parents as Teachers Grant, and then our 2027 capital request.
Hello? So my first report is on the Parents as Teachers Grant Program. The contract for this grant expires September 30th, so I'm requesting the school committee vote on a contract for October 1, 25 through September 30, 2026. I have included for the committee's review, an updated revenue and expenditure summary. NC, at June 30 fiscal year '24, we were at a significant loss. However, June 30, 2025, while the program's still running at a deficit, it is at a deficit of $31,461. So there have been definite improvements. The Department of Health also, in the grant, offers more opportunities for reimbursement by meeting certain levels of service by the parent educators. They will also fund, in this new contract, an additional position. They will actually fund the position for up to six months. After that, we receive Medicaid reimbursement and other billables to offset it. Though also, if there's any turnover in the program, they will help support that turnover, knowing that a new staff member won't be at full capacity of service units. So when you look at the contract extension, it does say to increase the agreement by $467,000. So however, that's the maximum possible reimbursement. For example, Agenda Page Six in the budget narrative, the first line, personnel turnover salary included in that $400,000 is $70,747.20 of staff turnover funds. If we don't have staff turnover, we're not eligible for those funds. So I just want to be clear, this isn't a $467,000 grant, if you will. What I have also included, and you had also received last year, is an updated performance measures report for the program, which goes through all of the services the parents and teachers provide. On Agenda Page 18, we have an affiliate performance report that shows 62 families served for the year, 77 children, and goes into the different statistics for the year of all the services that our parent educators have provided. We do have our parent educators with us. I didn't know if there were any financial questions for me, and certainly if there's any programmatic questions or questions on the performance reports, our parent educators could certainly speak to that.
Thank you, Cindy. Just so I understand the numbers. So our contract indicates that it could cost up to $467,000 plus? Is that what you're saying?
But that's the potential funding that we could receive from the Department of Health.
So the program itself costs...
Right. If you look at the revenue and expenditure summary report, so you can see in fiscal year '24, our total expenditures were $266,000. And then in fiscal year '25, $295,000.
Okay. So is there any other option for covering the deficit? I mean, where does that come from out of our budget?
That would have to come from the general fund.
And so if we approve this today, are we approving to cover that 31...
If there's a loss eventually, it would have to be covered from either operating surplus or fund balance, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Cindy, just one other quick question. Under expenditures, the miscellaneous category, more than doubled, what does that account for?
Okay. So miscellaneous is all of, let's see, like on Agenda Page Seven, model fees and trainings. And I believe, so any of the fees and trainings that are required for the Parents as Teachers Program are reimbursed by the Department of Health. So when it comes to the expenditures for the program, are the billable units, if you will, if they're eligible for Medicaid, we bill Medicaid. If not, it's the Department of Health through this grant, and that is what is supposed to cover the majority of the salary and fringe benefits. Other line items such as supplies and program fees, things of that nature, are covered by the Department of Health. They provide for mileage reimbursement. So it's really the salary and fringe having the billable service units to cover that portion.
Thank you, Cindy. I just had a question about the Medicaid reimbursement rate. What determines that, and how much of a fluctuation do you see from year to year?
We have not seen much of a fluctuation in the rate itself. You can see it under, right, in Department of Health bill visits, $49.13 per 15 minutes. So if Medicaid, if the child is, and parent are non-M Medicaid eligible, then we bill under this grant. If not, we bill for Medicaid.
Okay.
So, but there are only certain services that fit under that billable visit category. Because you can see on Agenda Page Eight, the third line down, they have a line called outreach time, where they're reimbursing us up to $4,700. So this is time spent on outreach. It's required, it's necessary for the program. However, it's not a billable service.
Okay.
So the Department of Health is recognizing that and providing some reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you.
So if there are no other questions, I'll just get the language here. I will seek a motion to accept the contract that's been presented here to extend the agreement through September 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. That motion passes. So next item we have here is our 2027 capital request.
So the 2026-27 proposed capital request, as Dr. Garso stated, has been recommended by the building subcommittee. With school committee approval, this will be sent to the town manager by the deadline of October 1st. Then after that, it will go to the planning board, finance board, and throughout the budget process. So there are eight items in the capital request. The total estimated impact is $3,173,122. We do have an MOA with RIDE for housing aid, so any projects that are eligible for reimbursement have been noted, and upon project completion, all eligible projects, we will apply for the reimbursement each year by July 15th. I'll go through each one of them briefly. The first one is vehicle replacement. It's for an electric bus, partially funded by a Rhode Island DEM grant, another large school bus, a full-size gasoline-powered bus, a minibus, and a van. And these replacements would be funded by a five-year lease. So the vehicle replacement of $144,341, that's year one of the lease. Both all-school and town vehicles now are on a lease. We use a lease replacement program. So year one of the lease is paid for out of capital, and then the remaining years go under the town debt service. So each year, as one lease drops off, another one's added on, and it enables us to stay up to date with our vehicle fleets without significant fluctuations in the capital budget. So that's number one. The second one, a vehicle purchase. This is a van for technology and facilities to transport equipment and materials throughout the district. The third one, a roof replacement. This is over three years for the middle school. Year one, phase one, would be $1,617,000. We did request year one of the middle school roof replacement for the FY '26 capital, and that request was not funded in this year. Fourth one, HVAC upgrades, $400,000. This is for ductless AC units to provide cooling to various classroom spaces throughout the school district. This would be in locations, obviously, other than the new State Street school. Number five, install new LVT flooring and vinyl base, Springbrook Elementary School, This was an item that was not in the final list for items for Springbrook in the bond. Number six, window replacement, Dunn's Corner Schools. Same thing, this is not in the bond, $175,000. This would be phase one, and this is a three-year phase. Number seven, security systems district, $200,000 from the Director of Technology. So replacement modification of 128 cameras and additional cameras based on security assessments. The past three years, the concentration has been more on outside cameras, so these are more for internal cameras, but also noting that if a need occurred for outdoors, we would do that as well. And number eight, bus garage parking lot improvements, $350,000. Paving, striping, and upgrades to the bus garage parking lot. This year, we have $200,000 in this line. The quote to do the work is over $500,000. It's something we're working with the town on right now to try to pave this lot at a reduced cost. So those are the items that are requested. I know there were some questions on electric buses, so should I have Rudy come up to...
Yeah. Anybody have a question they want to start with? Angela, your mic is on. She's going for it. Joe, did you... Go ahead.
Just two things really quickly. I guess he's going to answer the question about the electric bus specifically. Why is there a specific reason we're going with an electric bus instead of just one of the cheaper gas replacements that's listed right beneath it? And also, when these say they're eligible for ride reimbursement, what percentage of each cost is that typically?
So the percentage of ride reimbursement is 35%, unless we receive any bonuses.
And with the electric bus upfront, the capital cost is higher, but the overall savings through the life of the vehicle, we look to save approximately $75,000. And this is, you know, over the 10-year life and the partial subsidy from a Rhode Island DEM grant.
Oh, poor Rudy. Okay. Couple things with the electric bus, and I understand the savings of the $75,000, and actually, it kind of ties into, I've got all kinds of little notes and stuff, but hear me out here, we're listening to like, number eight, it's going to cost us, what, $550,000 to repave a parking lot? Is that what we're saying at the garage? Which is outrageous, but wow. So I've done a lot of looking at the electric buses. I am not against electric vehicles. I've owned one. I have a... So I've done a lot of looking at the electric buses. I am not against electric vehicles. I've owned one. I have a hybrid vehicle. Trust me, I'm not against them. I have concerns about our current fleet and continuing to do this. Scott did acknowledge when he was here last time about the need for a, a balance. So this would be, correct me if I'm wrong, is, would this be electric bus number six? Is that correct?
This would be for number eight.
Number eight, okay. So that means our ratio right now would be eight new electric buses to one gasoline bus in the last three, four years? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So then it brings me to reliability of these things because, sorry, one service is my neighborhood, as you know. Okay, week one of school, perfect. Second week of school, three days, was off the run two days. This week, still hasn't been on the road. It, it's a brand-new vehicle. Like, I, I, I just don't understand why. I mean, you don't go to a car dealership and buy a brand-new vehicle and expect it to continue to keep breaking down. You, you, you buy something that's ten years old with a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, you get what you get. But we, we're having to keep gas buses to cover the runs, and good old trusty number fourteen covers EV two's run every time. And it's always there. And it's like, I just don't understand. And I, I look at like Bus 101, which is the handicap vehicle that my son rides on. That bus is six, I think, now? Five, six, something like that?
Yeah.
That bus has never missed a week, ever, ever. It misses a day here and there, but not weeks at a time. This is my problem. These EV buses are not reliable. They're just not on the road all the time. Secondly, my point with the paving is, and you guys probably all think I'm insane for asking what the weight of the buses were, but I had a reason for it. So two things, and Cindy, you can correct me if I'm completely out in left field here, but my understanding is, is that the buses are registered in Rhode Island as commercial vehicles. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
So commercial vehicles in Rhode Island are billed, but their registration via weight. So the electric buses being more, cost us more to register them. So there is the additional fee there. Secondly, I wanted to point out that, so the New York Department of Transportation Director came out with a bunch of concerns because the state of New York went primarily electric school buses. And I'm just going to briefly read it to you. One of the significant challenges, it comes from the weight of electric school buses compared to diesel-powered counterparts. According to the New York State Association Town of Superintendent of Highways, is a diesel bus could typically weighs ten tons per axle, while an electric bus can carry around fourteen tons per axle. This increase could lead to a twenty percent reduction in pavement lifespan due to, due to subgrade deterioration. Additionally, the expected li- life of a road surface drops from ten years to eight years due to the subject subjected heavier electric buses. So, okay, we've saved seventy-five thousand dollars in our school budget, which we have, okay, for maintenance. But just because now we have to fix the roads sooner, yes, it's not the school pot, but it's still the town pot of money that's our pot of money that we're paying for taxes. So really, when I look at this, it, it looks like dollar for dollar, they really kind of come out to be about the same when you really factor in all the costs. And they're not reliable. They're still not on the road nearly as much as the gas buses. That's my problem. And my kid has been on E2 since it started, and it has never gone a year without significant times off the road. So for me, I'm not, I, I, and my last question, or my last point being is I'm all about inclusionary. Obviously, as you know, my son rides a wheelchair. We have Bus Nine. Bus Nine to me is incredible. I don't know if you guys all know we have Bus Nine. It is the full-size bus that has a handicap lift. It allows him to be inclusionary with his friends, with his peers. It allows any other student in this district to be on a bus with their peers like that. Right now, there's two buses. There's EV two when it works, going through my neighborhood for Dunn's Corners, and then there's a second bus that has to run. So two staff, two monitors, and two buses. I would rather see us look at getting more inclusionary buses than doing this. That, that's where I'm at with this. Okay, I'm done.
I can understand that. I knew you'd have a bunch there. I can understand your concern about the reliability, but there are so many electric cars on the roads and, and trucks on the roads in Westly right now where ours being on the road, uh, two hours a day for a hundred and eighty days is not going to be significant to what everybody else does, you know, in terms of driving in electric cars. And I know the big thing in New York was when that parking lot collapsed because of the weight of the electric cars that were in there. I get that part, but we're living in this world where it's, it's going to be electric, so. But I understand your issue about reliability.
Tim didn't actually ask a question, so I will. Why is the bus off the road?
The bus is off the road right now for regular software updates. At the moment, it's up at the dealership. We, because of the new technology, some of the updates have to be done up at the dealership, so we can't accommodate that right now. We are working to have those capabilities as we move forward. But it, that's where it's up right now.
Why would, wouldn't that make sense to be done over the summer rather than the second week of school?
We can't control when the updates come from, uh, from the OEMs. When, it's the same as a service recall. Whenever we get a recall notice on a vehicle, we have to service it.
Well, for all the reasons that Tim just said, and because, I'll just say it, I don't really support electric vehicles, and I think we were roped into this years ago because of all of the rebates and the incentives and the this, and all of those are gone. And the grant money is trickling in still, but who knows for how long? And actually, if we look at it, the grant money is probably coming from all of our taxes, which is probably making all of our utility bills higher to begin with. That's kind of my issue with the electric vehicle deal anyway. So I wouldn't, I, I would support all of the other things on our proposed capital request except for number one.
So we have, we're going to have a buses. The current buses, overall, how, how are the reliability? Are they off the road more or compared to a gas bus? And we don't want to go with the diesel buses, just the gas buses. But in comparison, I, I understand Tim has a firsthand experience, and that may be reflective of what's going on throughout the town. But as a percentage compared bus to bus, what does it look like?
The percentage is almost not different. We pulled the numbers again today, and buses, uh, Bus One is doing about, is running about twelve thousand five hundred miles per year. Bus Two is running fourteen thousand six hundred miles per year. Bus Three is running eleven thousand miles per year, and your average gas bus is running thirteen thousand miles per year. So they are accumulating the same amount of miles, so they have to be, you know, driven the same. So that's, um, as of this morning odometer readings. So the, the uptime is still equivalent across the board.
One of the problems between gas and electric is that electric, you know, it doesn't fluctuate as much as gas can. Uh, I know when I've previously been on the school committee, the gas prices increased overnight, and it really exploded the budget. And, and, you know, you will budget for a certain amount, and that does cost problems. So I think with the, with the electric and the gas, it's choose your problem. And I think that's what it comes down to. And eventually, we're moving towards a more, if not electric than hybrid system. And I think, I mean, when we talk about what's better or what's not, we have to keep that in mind that we may be in the future not have that much of a choice.
Did anyone else's electric bill go up huge over the last few months? Okay, I was just curious.
I'm just, I, I understand that there's a Rhode Island DEM grant involved in this, but I'm just looking at a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar bus versus a hundred and sixty thousand dollar bus that's more reliable, that doesn't get reduced mileage in the winter, which I know electric vehicles do because I own a hybrid myself, and those batteries just don't do as well in the cold. Again, as Mrs. Wycall said, our electric bills go up every year. They never come down. The gas prices, even with all of the volatility in, in the economy, have stayed pretty consistent for quite some time now. I don't know. I just think if you're going to spend four hundred and eighty grand, get three, three new buses instead of one. That has to have a charging station, go up for software updates and whatever else. That's just my opinion. But thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, Rudy. Um, I had a question, I think it's for you, Cindy, about the ride reimbursement. Some of these items say may be eligible for ride reimbursement. What is that contingent upon?
So the ones that they do say the project, they will say the project is eligible for ride reimbursement. And those, those are capital projects that are also included in our five-year capital plan that was approved by Ride that we, we have an MOA for. So, but for example, vehicle replacement is not eligible for ride reimbursement regardless of, of any plan, so those projects will not be. But any, any project on here that, that is eligible for ride reimbursement, it, it, it does state that, and we do have the five-year capital plan and the agreement with Ride. We still have to go through and follow the Ride process and submit the proper documentation for the completed project, but those projects are eligible.
Two more quick questions. Um, one on the, is it the minibus? Is it the same as the ones we have now, or is that what, what we'd be getting?
Yes, yep.
I'm just curious because it, it's, again, my son rides one, and I actually happen to pass one of the Cheraho ones, which look exactly the same. Those things for some reason are rotting out like crazy at a really low, you know, I mean, they're like six. So it, that's kind of scary. But, um, and my other quick question was, with the HVAC upgrades, is that just random throughout the district? It is, okay. And I know there's been a couple of these, obviously at Dunn's, and they've been incredible. So, yeah, it's, it's a great move.
Well, we do, again, have Mark McKinnon. If there are no more questions for Rudy regarding the buses, maybe any other capital request questions for Mark?
Because what I think you want to do is, is seek a motion to approve this for submission to the, to the manager.
And if that fails, of course, then, you know, amendments could be made or, or motioned for.
Yeah. Does anybody have anything for Mark before we do that? No. Um, Bill, can we take it line by line? Because I think there's some that are definite yes, some ignore discussion.
Typically, you would seek a motion to approve
Okay.
this submission. Have a discussion. You can then eliminate items or
Okay.
amend the motion, but it typically is submitted as one document.
Okay, all right. So what I will do is I will seek a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven proposed capital request as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. So discussion.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I, I don't know if we can now go line by line, because I'm, again, I'm, I'm a no on number one, but I'm, I'm good with the rest of them. Or I would like to modify number one, I'm sorry.
Okay. So would we take the vote? How would we modify within the motion? So we can do this, right?
You can vote on the motion that's pending.
Okay.
Or if someone offers a modification of that, an amendment to that motion, and you vote on the amendment before you would vote on the entire motion.
Okay. Tim, what do you got?
So I'd like to modify, um, number one to be two full-size gasoline buses and then continue with the I guess, minibus and van, and then accept two through eight.
Second.
So do we have to?
Now, Mr. Kill, is that in a, you're making an amendment to the motion?
Yeah. So do we need a second on that, or?
So requires a second.
Yep.
And a discussion on the amendment, and then a vote on the amendment.
Okay. Any discussion? Go ahead, Lori.
So do we need to see the numbers though before we would be able to vote on the whole? No? Okay. No?
Say that again.
It's going to change the numbers that we're submitting to Town Hall. So even if we agree on the amendment, we don't know what number we're submitting to Town Hall. I wouldn't feel comfortable sending something over that we haven't, that I don't know what the number is.
It's got to be, this submission, even as amended, has to be specific with the real numbers. If
So we would just wait for next year?
So we'd have to see it.
I, just procedurally, we don't have another meeting until October third, and this is due on the first, correct? So
Yes.
So we would potentially have to have.
Yeah, so we just pull it out? We can just pull number one out and do, look at it next year then? I would just, I mean, right? What's the, I mean, the buses last.
We need to replace the buses. I mean, it's one thing to say we want to switch it from gas and from electric gas. It's another thing, we'll, we'll do it next year because that adds to next year's capital budget.
Every year adds to the capital budget. We add new things every year. So.
We have the numbers in front of us. Can Cindy just modify it from what the electric buses, double the gas, and we have the number?
Right. But I think the thing is, what we're voting on tonight, we have to have that completed number in front of us, and I wouldn't want to put that on Cindy without her being able to do so.
Madam Chair, I also, you know, at this point, no disrespect, but we're arbitrarily moving numbers around and making decisions on what buses instead of that buses. And, uh, you know, I, let me ask the question, if we were to vote this in the entirety and next time we're on, and, and again, you know, really Lori too, and, and, you know, a bunch of us are concerned about the electric bus, but, um, you know, it's just going over to the town. At this point, we're not spending any money. You know, so if we decide and say, you know, after all is said and done, that we are not going to go with the electric buses, but I just hate to be arbitrary in tonight's decision on that, you know? And I, again, I, I know Tim, Tim stated was valid to, you know, switching off with the gas buses, but you know, these people have been working on this, and I don't want to be arbitrary about it.
Yeah. Lori, go ahead.
We did that last year, and we were told it was just going over to the town, and now looking at it this year, there are two buses in process that we, I actually didn't think that we ever approved. So, no, I don't think we should just send it through, and it's not arbitrary. One of our few things as the school committee that we're supposed to be doing is looking at the numbers for the sixty-million-dollar budget, and that's what we're doing. So if the numbers aren't presented to us with what we feel comfortable voting on to send to the town, you shouldn't be asking us to just vote yes.
No, I'm not saying that arbitrarily in the sense of just voting yes. I'm just saying that we're making the decision. I mean, I, you know, if you all agree with, with Tim in terms of the gas, but we're, we're doing it tonight, you know?
Yeah. Cause, oh, go ahead, Mike.
I mean, if the issue is about the numbers, we could always have a, a special meeting just to have it be submitted before October first. I mean, it, it would just be, that would be the only item.
I thought somebody was going to say that. I knew it was coming. Okay. Joe, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, we absolutely, if this is not what we want to do, we should absolutely not send this to the town until it's amended. Because otherwise, what's in writing is what we approved, and that's what gets done. That's, that's how this works. Uh, it's, it's not a point a finger at anybody. It's like, you're just trying to follow procedure. Let's just do it the right way the first time.
Mike?
So we already, we have an amendment. Should, should we vote on that and then move forward with whether we accept the plan as presented, or we'll make adjustments?
Yeah. So we have to vote on the amendment. Which? Tim, can you repeat it? Or if Rose already wrote it down, just to make sure. Because we had our first motion to accept it.
Modify item one to be two full-size gasoline buses, a minibus and a van, and accept two through eight.
Okay, so we have our motion. We have our second. Any further discussion? No. All right, so we'll poll vote.
And this is on the amendment only, right?
On the amendment only.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so that, the amendment passes four to three. So now we go back to our original intent of submitting it with the amendment.
Yeah, submit this as amended.
Submit this as amended, okay.
And just make sure that the amendment is clear.
So I will seek a motion to submit the proposed capital request as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All right, so we'll just poll vote one more time just to make sure.
Yes.
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 Oops, sorry, motion passes. Thank you, Cindy, thank you, Rudy. All right. Next thing we have here is our consent agenda. Chair seeks motion to approve items 11A, B and C.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a se-
With, uh, with a modification on the minutes which have, have been corrected. Uh, just a spelling of the last name.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All members in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, motion passes. Next up, we have correspondence. Anybody have anything they'd like to share out for correspondence? Oh, yep, go right ahead. We did receive just a couple of emails, um, some follow up from our last meeting, um, from community members. We also received, um, a concern around transportation, which I understand is being addressed. And want to make sure I didn't miss anything. I believe that was all. Uh, committee and liaison reports, anybody want to report out anything? Tim, go right ahead.
I'm just going to repeat the same thing I said last time. Um, uh, CLAC meeting is September 29th, 6:00 PM, Babcock B111.
Anybody else? Nope. All right, future agenda items. Anybody have anything they'd like for future agenda items?
This kind of fell under correspondence as well, but we've gotten a lot of correspondence over the last couple of weeks about transportation, a couple, uh, specific. And I was hoping to be able to discuss, um, the particular one that's been in front of all of us because I can't follow the Gmail so well. When I get it, it's hard for me to follow like the timeline of it. And I'd like to be able to hear from, from the transportation and the superintendent about why the decision was made. I felt like the, the parent who reached out to us went through the proper chain of command and then came to us because she's not satisfied. And I think it's our job to hear it out, hear her out, possibly if she's willing to come or submit some, something else in writing or, or however she's comfortable doing it. But I just think that's what we're here for is to help parents when they feel like they're not getting what they want out of the district. So I'd like to have that on the next agenda item.
Anybody else have an agenda item they'd like? Yeah, whoever.
Um, I was going to suggest an agenda item regarding, uh, the district website as well as the various, um, platforms for communicating with district parents.
Pretty much the same thing. I wanted to see, talk about like a uniform app. We're finding out, maybe if Mike could explain like if Power School can be implemented as far as a communication app across the district, because it's, it's really hard. There's too many.
Anybody else? All right. Um, okay, so we have our next open forum here, which this one is on non-agenda item comments are allowed. Anybody who wishes to address the committee? Go right ahead. And this open forum is limited to three minutes. You can come right up.
Hi, um, I'm the parent that you guys were just talking about. So, um, I'm here tonight to, oh, sure, Michaela Goldberg. Michaela, do you want me to spell it? Okay, Goldberg. Not good at this. Um, I'm here tonight to speak about my daughter's bus stop. I've already reached out to both the transportation department and Dr. Bergerso, but I still have concerns. My understanding is that the school committee is here to support the safety and wellbeing of students. So I'm asking for your help in reevaluating the bus stop location. To Lori's point, yes, the email trails got very confusing. So, um, just to give some background, I live on State Street for over 10 years. My oldest child attended Westerly Middle School and a spot was specifically added at State in Pennston because of safety concerns. That stop served my middle school son during his four years at Westerly Middle School and my daughter last year as well. But this year, her stop has been moved, requiring her to walk to State and Westminster. The problem isn't the distance, it's the lack of sidewalks and safe crossing areas. To reach the new stop, she has to cross the street twice, one of those times without a crosswalk or a cross, crossing guard. I was told there was ample grass to walk on, but in reality, the ground is uneven, unsafe in bad weather and becomes a snowbank in the winter. In addition, the intersection is known for speeding and drivers ignoring the stop sign. We've had so much issues that the police have actually had patrolled our area to stop that from happening. Um, hasn't really worked, but I've also been told the stop serves six kids and adding one at Pennston would slow the route. Four of the six students already live on Westminster and the remaining two are at State in Pennston. Since this is a first stop in the morning, I'm just curious if adding a extra stop would really add that much more meaningful time. The bus could continue down State Street at Pennston and loop back around adding only a couple of minutes. I'm respectfully asking that this stop be reevaluated. Safety must outweigh convenience and I believe restoring the Pennston stop is a safer option for these children. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, so I will open it up for committee members' responses. Anybody? No. Well, oh, go ahead, I was going to go.
I'll just say thank you for coming up. I know it takes a lot to come up to the podium and hopefully we will be discussing this.
Go ahead.
Yeah, to add to that, just, uh, hopefully you can make it to the next meeting when this is actually on the agenda being discussed because then you'll be here for the discussion and you'll have two chances to speak. Thank you.
And I do just want to say thank you for coming, um, and speaking. I know it's not an easy thing all the time, um, but we have made the request here so we can have that, um, further discussion and we can reevaluate from there and see what happens. All right, thank you so much. Okay, with that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second, all members in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That's right.
Have a good night, everyone.